All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular meeting of the Lahuna City Council. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you would please rise for our invocation. Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished council members and fellow citizens of Lahuna, I welcome you to this important gathering as we convene to discuss matters that shape our community's future. Let us approach our deliberations with wisdom, empathy, and a shared commitment to progress. May our discussions be guided by the spirit of cooperation, seeking solutions that uplift our city and its residents. In the spirit of unity, let us begin meeting with an open heart and a dedication to the betterment of Lahuna. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
If you stay standing and if Councilman Velasquez would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Schofield.
Ramirez.
Present.
Velasquez.
Present.
Ayala.
Here.
Ochoa.
Here.
Vila.
Here.
Pintoya.
Here.
All right. Minutes of the previous meeting. Have we entertained a motion?
I motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Excellent. Excellent minutes by our recorder. That was a lot of conversation.
Thank you.
And I see Betty complimented her on it. So when Betty retires and Melanie retires from the city, she'll go work for Rocky Ford.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. All right. Citizen participation. Anyone who would like to do citizen participation, you need to come up to the mic stand. You need to state your name and your address. This is for a total of five minutes. Now we'll start your clock and... Hold on. Hold on. Now you got to turn your mic on too. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dee Leba. I live at 511 Lincoln here in Lahuna. And I just wanted to update everyone and apologize. At the town hall meeting, we said that our 2A4LJ committee was www.2aforlj.com, but it's actually .org. We don't have any information up on the site yet. Some of us were really sick, so apologies for that. But we do have an email address. If you have direct questions that we can look up for you to get the information out, it's info@2aforlj.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the number for, right?
Yes.
No, it's fine.
Okay. My name is Alyssa Lovato. I live at 2402 Santa Fe in Lahuna. And I'm speaking on behalf of 2A4LJ. I'm the group leader for youth involvement. And I was currently the pool manager at the City of Lahuna Wipeout. I worked there for nine years. I did take one year off and I came right back to it. I just kind of want to bring true statements to what would happen and kind of give you a perspective from the youth end of things if we were shut down, which is a possibility. I know a big focus in a small town like we have is bringing kids back to give back to our community. I went and got a bachelor's degree. I'm currently getting my master's and teach PE at the primary and of course run the pool when it's in season. Just some numbers for you guys. We employ 35 to 40 kids every year and run 600 to 700 people a day that use our facility. We have a tiger shark program, 75 kids, a senior center aquatics class, that's about 35, 40 people. We do swim lessons, which can be anywhere from 200 to 300 kids every year. We have private parties, night swims, family day, ladies' day. There's a lot of, there's a lot of programs built in for our community. If this wasn't here, we would be taking away from not just the youth, but the community as a whole. Something else I want to recognize is we can control being open where our kids are going a little bit. And if the swimming pool, the golf course, the library, and the senior center were closed, we don't have a lot of control and who knows what kids would be doing in a small town with nothing to do. Like I said, coming back to the town, I would love to give back any way I can. And this would really hurt if we were shut down, not only for us and our employees and a chance to give back, but the kids that need something to do every day. We see a lot of the same kids and I think they would really hurt if we were closed. I also would like to say that it's, I know there's discussion about it being a punishment to close these facilities. And I just believe that going from a 3% to a 4% sales tax increase would be more beneficial for our community than to increase fees and make facilities that we have harder to have access. Especially after COVID, there's a lot of people living paycheck to paycheck and, you know, can't afford to go do those things at a higher cost. They're already struggling. So I just personally believe that a 4% sales tax increase would be beneficial for the community.
Thank you.
Alyssa, wait up one second. You said nine years you've been here?
Yes.
With the pool?
Yes.
What did you notice about the cuts that were made from last year to this year?
Through the community, I just feel like we got a lot of disappointing or disappointment from like the community. We did have to cut a night swim and a decent amount of private parties. Private parties are huge. They book up by February typically of the year prior. So those being closed, there was a lot of complaints about that and then not having a night swim. We did have to cut a family day as well. So there was just a lot of disappointment and less hours for the kids too.
Did you have a lot of rentals at night?
Yeah, we were booked up.
All summer?
All summer, yeah. Like, so booking starts in June and we're booked by February. So it was unfortunate, but we had to cut a lot of those parties. And then anything that was filled, we couldn't fill in. So they'll just have to wait till the next year.
Do you have a lot of out-of-town people coming?
Yes, we do. That's another thing. The, the sales tax wouldn't just increase us. It's, we're getting that from other communities, you know? There's a lot of towns that don't have a pool and there's a lot of stuff like the vacation Bible schools, the baseball tournaments that bring in other, or just family reunions that bring in a lot of other people. So it's not just affecting our community, but it's going deeper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question. What's the immediate job impact if it was to close? How many?
I'm sorry, repeat it.
How many jobs would be impacted if it was closed?
The pool?
Yes.
Forty, 35 to 40. We hire anywhere from 20 to 25 lifeguards a year. And so depending on the year, 30, 35, 40.
Thank you.
Anyone else for citizen participation?
Me and you girls ain't gonna jump up and talk that.
I'm here because I'd like to tell this library, the pool, the senior citizen center, the golf course, how much I appreciate their, what they do for our city. However, I've read all of the emails and all of the, on Facebook and on your, that you guys have sent out. I've put myself in this kind of position where I want to do a little comparison. I've got some money sitting over here. I'm going to go to Europe. My car gets destroyed. Do I go to my neighbors and say, "I cut your lawn. You owe me." "I took you to the doctor. You owe me." "I did something for you too. You owe me." So... I have to decide. Do I finance a new car? Or I do, I take the money out of a savings that I already have? Financing a new car would be something that I'm not paying already because my car's paid off. So as far as I'm concerned, funds, I have to use funds that I have. The city should use the funds that they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizen participation?
Hi there. Good on. Yep, all right.
No.
Hi.
No.
Where do you put the button?
There you go.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Hi, my name's Bethany Binder and I reside at 802 Carson. I just want to talk on behalf of the LJ for, or 2A4LJ as well. I don't have numbers like Alyssa do and I think that's phenomenal, phenomenal that she did. But I am, I would consider myself an engaged community member. And I just want to bring to light what I see from our community. So I had heard that 60% of this tax would be affected... Sixty-three, okay. Would be affected by out-of-town people. From what I have seen, we have at least a 200-mile radius of ranching and agricultural families that come in for... Oh, I gotta cool down. Sorry. That come down for our sail barns over here. As well as throughout the summer, you can see the Lahuna Walmart parking lot packed with RVs and different how, or different like cars of people coming through. I moved down, back down. I grew up here, but I moved back from Denver. And a lot of my friends from Denver either know Lahuna for Ben's Fort or Lucy's Tacos, which sounds ridiculous, but people from the state know about Lahuna and come and visit here quite a day. So I just want to give perspective on how many people are traveling through here. Along with the Amtrak, I heard had a misfire or a delayed calls a couple of weeks ago. So we had tons of people in our downtown area. So if 2A doesn't pass, they won't have a library to go to or a senior center to check out or any of the other nice amenities that we have. And the pool. I used to work at the pool too. And that was my first high school job. And that was where I made some of the best memories with my like friends. And I have those friendships still to this day. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizen participation? Nope. Okay. Thank you all for that. New, oh, nope, I got a reporter. Arkansas Valley Hospice.
Yep. All right. My name is Steve Hicks and I'm the chaplain for Arkansas Valley Hospice. And we're at 531 Lewis. We are having a spaghetti dinner and dance on the September the 15th. It goes from four to eight. You have to have a ticket and I do have some tickets available. They are $10 a ticket. Get you in there for the, there's going to be auctions and food and dancing there. And it's going to be at the Knights of Columbus. And then the next day, September the 16th, we're also going to be having a golf, Lahuna Golf Tournament. Four-person scramble. And so I have some of these things. I'll leave them out by the table. Or you can have them right there. Okay, very good. And so all that information is in there. We appreciate you guys letting me come today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Do you guys know about how many teams you're going to have in that tournament?
I don't. That is somebody else's job to take care of that, so.
Is it at the Lahuna Golf Course?
It is at the Lahuna Golf Course. Yes.
And that's a fundraiser for you guys?
It is a fundraiser for us. Yes.
But this, this isn't the spaghetti supper?
No. There's two events. So the spaghetti supper...
Is the 15th?
Is the 15th from four to eight. You have to have a ticket for that. And then $10 for the ticket. You can call us at 384-8827. And get your ticket there. You can come to the door too and get them there. You bet? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Maloff.
Yeah.
Where is he? Oh. You're like a magician. I didn't see you get up. You had to have moved faster and go back there than we do.
The wonder powers that I have.
Turn your mic on, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mike.
Don't delay the day.
See? Mike.
Okay. I've got a special events permit from the Lahuna Chamber of Commerce request for Early Settlers Day, September 9th, 2023, from 1:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. at the Santa Fe Plaza. That application's in order. Fees have been paid. Publication's been made. Management recommends favorable approval.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the application for the Lahuna Chamber of Commerce special event.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not a last for your vote? Alyssa? If you want to. Okay. That passes unanimously with one abstention. Mr. Maloff?
Mr. Mayor of Arkansas.
Mike.
Hello, hello.
Mr. Mayor, Arkansas Valley Hospice has requested a special events permit to be conducted at 118 Steen Avenue for their spaghetti fundraising dinner to be held on September 15th, 2023, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. That application's in order. I'm telling you, it's not me. It's this. That application's in order. Fees have been paid and management recommends favorable consideration.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a special event permit for Arkansas Valley Hospice for their event spaghetti dinner dance.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not a last for your vote? And that passes unanimously. Committee and board reports. Do I have any committee and board reports?
I have a utility board report. Just a little bit from each department. The maintenance at the kids rodeo for the upcoming, or maintenance at the rodeo grounds for the upcoming kids rodeo being done. There was a brief power outage on the east side of Lahuna that was not due on the city's part. It was, a guy wire was snapped by a forklift on, by a contractor doing some of the bridge improvement out there. So that's what led to that power outage. The water department is in the process of installing new meters. Wastewater backup generator is going to be, is going to have some repairs coming up. And showing great collaboration with other departments within our city help. They're assisting the street department with actually doing some of the patches. So everybody's kind of all hands on deck, working towards patching holes or potholes in the city. Lastly, if you experienced a water clarity issue, especially on the east side of town, there was a fire in the 1300 block of Bradish. When the fire department hooks up to hydrant, the water flow can score the inside of that pipe and create some type of a clarity issue. You can just let your cold water run for a little bit and that should take care of the issue. If you have an ongoing problem or it's taking longer than you think, contact Rick or Mr. Seago with the water department at that point. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Ramirez?
Yeah. I've got a Parks and Rec board report. Summer Ball, they had 270 participants, 21 teams. And we also have 14 local businesses that sponsor teams. So we want to send a thank you out to those businesses that are giving back to the community. Coming up, we've got football starting. We have 111 participants. They're going to start in early September. They still have to do drafting and handing out equipment and stuff like that. But that'll start in early September. In combination with Early Settlers Day, Zeke Ayala, everybody that's participating in that, there's a three-on-three, and we talked about this before, but we brought this up there, three-on-three basketball tournament that's going to be happening. This will occur at the courts at the city park. It's a $50 entry fee for that. But I wanted to put that out there for the community for people who are interested. And lastly, as a board, we were technically an advisory board, but we spoke together about 2A and what we thought pertaining to the Parks and Recs department and the effects it would have on that in, in every aspect. And as a group, we kind of came to the conclusion that that advisory board is in favor of 2A. And the reasons specifically are that general fund feeds into everything that the Parks and Recs department does, including the youth program. So those are vital to our, to our city. Like Alyssa said, it gives those kids something to do during the summer. Or, I mean, this Parks and Rec is year-round really, so super vital to our youth. So as, as a group, like I said, we were, we're supporting 2A. So that's all I got.
On that Diamondback Basketball Tournament, is that men's, women's, or both? Or how's that work?
That I couldn't tell you. I don't know if they're specifically doing men's and women's or if it's a co-ed. It'll be, that's a lot to look into.
Do you also have flag football and tackle, right?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Any other committee and board reports? All right. Mr. Klein. Mike.
Tomorrow, tomorrow I have a pre-construction meeting with TLM. They got to work for the trailer. And so by tomorrow afternoon, I should know when they're going to come in and what the timeframe is to finish up that part. The pool's closed. We did have lights attendants on Dog Day, I heard. Had. Only a couple of people showed up. And that's rare, isn't it? Because usually we get a lot more and stuff. I don't know if everybody just clocked and stuff. The football restoration ended Friday. Volleyball ended Friday, but we got a week, a late volleyball. Police Center Park, great success. I don't know if any of you made it out to Police Center Park, but, you know, that wasn't paid anything by Lahuna. That was businesses, your downtown businesses. Sure provided all the food and everybody else was there on their own time. And they just want to make it, show you all the good things that we do do, you know? It is kind of always funny. I've always noticed that with police money, you know, they have to come in, get the deal done, then they want you to leave. But if you're a fireman, hey, come on, man. Let's have supper too. And, but we got to get there with our police department. Because these guys have a very hard job. They do a great job. And we need to, they need our support. And I noticed that Aurora is doing the same thing so that they can recruit officers because they can't get anybody to come to their city because of some things that have happened. So you're lucky for the type of police department that we have. At the library, on Friday, we'll storytime from birth to pre-cate. They'll start on September 1st at 10 o'clock. For the kids K through six, the Friday filler will start on September 1st. And on September 5th, 7th grade through 12th grade on your teens program. So if you want to get in there and get some of that done, we're still working on budget. I was informed by the county that we will not have a chipped seal program this year. Their machine is down. We're talking to them about some other type of projects to help us out with and stuff. And hopefully we'll get that done. We are patching, you know, as much as we go in it, they're doing on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Running oil, we'll be doing it. Like right now, it's only doing Thursday. We did help with the fair by sweeping it for them. We finished off the last park shelter. Thank you, Gilbert. You know, but, you know, I went down there two weekends ago on the Sunday, you know, just to see how the kids were and everything. And when I drove up, I got out of my car and the first thing is I had four little kids come up to me and they said, "Sir, can we show you something?" And so I went up on the tally and on level two and level three, somebody went and they're feeding some stuff that we did get off. But please, these are for kids, man. Don't do that. You know, have some respect. You know, that's a great thing. Let's, don't destroy it. Okay? Where you are, I've got all the bases in, along Carsons for stop signs. And I think we started putting some up, right, Gilbert? Yep. And that'll be first attempt. And with that, I'm open to questions. Oh, no. Last but not the least. Man, had a great meeting with Amtrak, CDOT, on the through train alternative. Now, they had six, six alternatives, right? Now, four of them was just, you know, getting off the Amtrak and you get it. You know, the next day, you go, or you go up to Plavlo or Springs and then the next day come back. Well, those failed. And there was four of them. But the two that stayed was alternative one and six. And one, twice daily, from here to Plavlo, Springs, and back. Coming off of the morning train and then you'd be back by the second trip for the night train. Or the Plavlo and back, twice a day. Now, they've already done the analysis that they would need to do, you know, to make this work. Because, you know, that's always been something they said, "Oh, man, you know, we can't break on to the BNSF's money line." Because, you know, that's where all your energy trains come through and that is what the line they keep up. But if we put in a new 16,000-foot siding up there just about where your Plavlo Army Depot is, lengthen out another one right where the Army Depot is, and make them into 16,000 square, 16,000-foot long ones. And they were going to combine the Roman and Manzanola one, make a 19,000-foot siding and increase the one at Rocky Ford to 9,000. And these trains could pass each other. Because, you know, you got to remember, you know, on the through train, it's not six, seven cars. It's two to three cars that are just jetting up and back. So that did meet my heart a lot of good because I kept thinking, you know, okay, they don't have some type of snaffoo that, that can't do it. Our analysis came back. But BNSF's on board, U.P.'s on board. We have to have an extension on the platform, which would work for a good multimodal. So you have Plavlo and Carra Springs. They're looking at building new stations. Their Springs is looking at right where the power plant is downtown. But now they'll pause this analysis and we won't hear back until fall. And they're getting with all the front range passion derail people on the spine that will come down from Fort Collins all the way down to Plavlo and figure out, okay, how can we run trains concurrently with that? And what would the ridership look like and what kind of things would they have to do along from Plavlo to Carra Springs? So good things. That was big. I don't, you know, hopefully everybody feels as excited as me, but, you know, I've been working a long time. These will all be done to your, like a Tyga Grant, Hill Grant, Ray's, whatever they call them and stuff. But... But, uh, uh, your, uh, F R A, your federal railroad administration is totally behind this. And, uh, we are on, uh, Amtrak's master, uh, plan as far as to, uh, getting east, uh, our northwest line crossed in, uh, inside of America.
And then, um, they haven't discussed like the recent tickets, like what it would cost?
No, no, I'll check. I'll be late.
Can you imagine the tourists that'll be coming?
Can you imagine the exposure that we've had?
I'm gonna ease it.
Oh, this is only so great. You know, and, uh, you know, as, uh, when cars get more and more expensive and we can't, uh, do them, we'll have a walkable community with the trail and then we'll have, uh, mobility with Amtrak. We'll all be okay.
Good job, Rick. Thank you, Rick. I, I passed out, informed all the council. I had Rick, uh, look into this for me because he is our city manager. And there was a lot of talk out there about, you know, his salary. Um, and so we looked at six different communities and their salaries. Uh, some people were upset that the city manager makes six figures. Uh, pretty much every surrounding citizen, uh, city manager makes six figures. And not one of them does it for free, do they, Rick?
Not a one.
No. So if you don't like Rick or if you don't like the city manager, you still have to pay someone to do that job and it's not gonna be cheap.
And on, uh, communities our size, the average salary is a hundred and forty-two thousand. I was making below ninety thousand, or, uh, in the nineties until that pipe was shut. And, uh, shot me up to, uh, like a hundred and five. I'm a forty-year veteran.
That's not counting?
I get calls every day to try to come, uh, you know, to a different city. But I love, uh, because I've seen all you guys grow up and stuff and I want you to come back and that's all I want.
That's not counting your vehicle, right?
No.
That's a, what, ten thousand?
I don't know, Ed, I would give up my vehicle. I never even wanted to go, you know, but they, uh, want me to have a nice vehicle to take everybody around.
Give it up. Give it to the police.
Have you seen what vehicles that the other city managers drive? His is nothing compared to that. So ten thousand for a city asset for him to utilize?
Give it up, Rick.
Sure is, man. I'll have them just come to my office. We'll see how that works.
Any governing body comments?
I, I attended the tourism meeting, my, my wife and I, Betty and I, just as citizens. And I thought that it was pretty, uh, awesome of the tourism board to pass. I don't, I don't want to call it a resolution, but a unanimous support for the, for the two A ballot measure. And as did the utility board to pass a unanimous support for the two A, since I just wanted to mention that up there.
Any other governing body comments?
I do. I attended, um, the meeting, the, uh, monthly meeting at Clean Valley Recycling for their August meeting. And they converted in the month of July alone fifty-nine point six five total tons of diverted, um, with curbside and the collection dates that they have around. And so their goal is to increase the curbside customers and overall, um, diversion rate. Um, the city of Lahana, the utilities does a good job with handing out bags or promoting it. Um, because I did speak with Cindy there and, um, she says that they, um, do go over the options of signing up there for, um, Clean Valley Recycling. Um, you can also send any, um, C V R activities or questions or anything to cleanvalleyrecycling@gmail.com. And they also wanted to mention to please be mindful of the collection hours in operation when they have the trailers set up out there. Um, people are not adhering to their hours of operation and they're just, um, leaving. They show up and it's closed and so they're just leaving everything right there. And what could happen is that could, um, most definitely get into the Arroyo down there and into all of the waterways. So please be very mindful of that.
Any other governing body comments? Uh, I just do want to mention very briefly the Arkansas Valley Fair, uh, was this week. And it is the Arkansas Valley Fair, so it's the, sort of, this Arkansas Valley together. Uh, I was with Sally Coop judging the parade. And three ladies came and they were having their class reunion. They said there was like forty-some of them. And they weren't able to eat in Rocky Forest, so they had to book a reservation here in Lahana. Um, so, you know, I think a lot of the valley benefits when we have the fair. And we should all very, be very supportive and thankful that we're having that fair, uh, running every year. Um, Police in the Park, Rick already hit on that, but, uh, thank you to all of our police force. Uh, where is the police fu- force funded from, Rick?
General fund.
General fund, okay. Um, just wanted to make sure that that was clear on that too. Um, and before I do adjourn us, Mr. Maloff, do you wanna?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I'd appreciate the opportunity to have a short, very short executive session. Before you adjourn, please.
Which one are we doing?
Consultation with the city attorney?
Sorry, consultation with the city attorney? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session. Conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice and specific legal questions under Colorado Vice Statute twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, subsection four B.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not a last for your vote? And that passes unanimously. We will not be doing any business afterwards, right, Mr. Maloff?
You are correct.
Okay. Thank you all for coming out tonight.